I'm Zan Ojero, this year's Chair for the Benton County Board of Commissioners.
Pat Malone, Benton County Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby.
Benton County Administrator.
Ben Corby, Benton County Council.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer, and I apologize Commissioners, we're having a few technical difficulties in the room that we're working on getting sorted.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Dr. Hahn, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Danielle Brown, Benton County Health Department.
Kate Portia Corvall, Benton County Economic Development Manager.
Anyone else?
Yes, Brian Lee, Director.
Good morning, Brian. Good morning, Catherine Bisco.
Good morning. He explains to me how it works, so I went.
Okay, with that, I believe we are through our introductions, and this is the time for comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Now our time to review and approve the agenda. We do have a couple of additions to the agenda. We will once again hold an executive session at the completion of all of our business, under other, to get an update on various band acquisition questions related to criminal justice systems and criminal work. We do have two odds and ends items to consider, under other. One is whether or not we would like to sign on to endorse House Bill 2165, which would promote electric vehicle uptake across the state. And second, Dave Shepard from the Corvall City Council has advanced a letter to us with respect to addressing equity issues over ground the fact that young people do not receive, assuming those checks on their own when they are college students, they fall into that funny age gap. So the city council approved that 9-0 last night, they would like, we would be going to sign on with them. So with those additions, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Someone?
Second. All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Onward. The first item on business on our work session is to hear from our Emergency Operations Center, beginning with Brian Lee.
Yeah, morning Commissioner. So just a quick update, I know Suzanne, April, we'll go into a little more detail about the efforts for this week and last week and moving forward. But this week, we are focused on getting set up for another event this week at Research Stadium. Last week our event went very smoothly. Despite the snow and everything else, we had to receive nothing but positive comments about the flow and the process, so we're really happy about that. We're revamping our three EOC teams to start getting them into our regular rotation to provide a little bit of relief for folks. And other than that, things are moving forward positively. Keep your report.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Brian?
Commissioner Ojero, just to interrupt and make sure you're aware, Suzanne Hoffman is trying to get an ax, though. She's having some difficulty. She may be on the phone by now, but if she is not, I told her once she was able to get on, we'll swing around back to her.
That's good. Suzanne, are you with us? She's just around. Suzanne, we're ready for you if you can hear us. Perhaps not. Lilia, would you like to go next?
Okay Commissioners, today I wanted to kind of give you a state of the JIC response after our first month of activation. Sorry, bear with me while I'm getting my technology sorted. Okey-dokey, I think you all can see my screen now. So I'm going to try and run through this very quickly because I know that others are sharing the time with me. So if we don't have time for all the questions, please feel free to email me any questions, and I'll be happy to respond. So just for the sake of Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Wise, when we activated the Joint Information Center at the spring of 2020, I started reporting on a monthly basis what we were seeing in terms of communication. So I have updated this to show this month's homepage view. So that is the left bar on the right. You can see that traffic to the homepage of our COVID-19 website is at the levels that it was at in May, June and July. So it's the highest that we've seen in several months. In particular, on our website, I wanted to make you aware that our sub-pages have seen an exponential amount of traffic. I reported probably back in June these May numbers to you, you all can see 24,000. I was extremely proud of those numbers. That was all of the reopening business guidance that we put out there for our community. But what I was staggered to see when I pulled the numbers for today's presentation was that this past month in January, the guidance that we've needed to put out around background distribution is staggering. It is four times the amount that we saw back in May at 82,000 within the month of January. A tactic that I've never reported on before, but is critical, I believe, to report on now, given what you see on your screen, is our phone bank. You can see that during our highest volume months of when the county was closed and then reopening in April, May and June has been far surpassed in January. In January, we had fielded over 1,100 phone calls within our phone bank. And as you can see, this is an unprecedented amount of support that we have had to provide during the entirety of Benton County's COVID-19 response. A tactic that we stood up at the beginning of the month, so it's kind of new to this, JIC activation, is a distribution list for our community to sign up, so they don't necessarily have to check our website every single day. They can more passively receive content and information from us. So we created this listserv on January 8th. A week later, we sent our first distribution. You can see that our overall sign-ups was within the 1,000 to 2,000 range. Just a week later, on our second distribution on January 22nd, you can see that that distribution has grown, and we have a 76% open rate, and that's the blue part over here. And then most recently, the distribution that we put out last Friday, our distribution list has grown to over 4,000 at this point. And despite the growth, you can see that our open rate is consistent between 77 and 74%. So that's a fantastic open rate, and I hope to continue to see that as we move forward. One tactic that I wanted to report specifically on were our weekly videos. As you all know, Commissioners, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wise, during the initial activation of the Joint Information Center, we produced a daily video for our community members, knowing that they were at home and that they would be consuming that video content more rapidly. We scaled back that tactic in the early winter to do simply once a week English and once a week Spanish. So what you're looking at is the scaled back tactic of once a week videos. So what I have highlighted for you is our average reach on Facebook. That is our platform that consumes our video content the most. You can see that for each video that we post on Facebook, on average in English, we are reaching 2,000 people per video, I'm sorry, that's Spanish. We're reaching about 2,500 per foot. Oh wait, hold on, I can't even read my own grasp. These are all both Spanish over here. My apologies Commissioners. Okay. So the tail is December. Anytime that we're putting out a video in December in Spanish language, we're reaching about 2,600 people. Our English language video on Facebook is reaching about 1,300. In January, our Spanish language videos are reaching about 2,000 people on Facebook and our English one 1,400. I have our two other platforms here at the bottom. Of course, they're not highlighted at large because our numbers and our subscribers on our other two social media platforms is smaller. But what I really, really, really wanted to highlight was the importance of this video strategy to reach populations that we need to be a little bit more targeted. And I'm not saying that video is the solution to all targeted outreach, but what I do want to highlight is that led by Rosio Munoz, our vulnerable population section chief, the JIC has really tried to be more purposeful with MUM language outreach. The MUM language is a language that is frequently used amongst some of our farm working populations and others. However, the MUM language is an indigenous language and isn't traditionally written down, which means that traditional forms of communication, like the newspaper or other printed material, is really not suitable for this audience. So we've performed a variety of MUM language techniques, or I'm sorry, strategies, under Rosio's guidance. Some include radio advertising and of course this video. But what I wanted to show is one single video that we produced in December reached over 20,000 people on Facebook. So I think that the video tactic, while we're seeing smaller numbers with our English language, I certainly wouldn't want to stray too far from using this tactic as the overall mechanism to reach non-English users. So with that, that is all I had to share with you all this morning. I'm happy to take questions and turn it over to my colleagues.
Yeah, morning, Lilia. Basically, you got a great job on getting the word out, and seems like every board meeting that we have, we task you and your team to saddle up and get the word out, and doing a great job, and especially on the current situation and the vaccine, and there's national news confusing, well, just confusing the information that's out there. And my image was for the vaccine, we've got a really long line that people are in, and to show that, oh, the line is moving. And the vaccine is, I know people who've been vaccinated, and so it really will, the Research Event last week, I think, was a great start, or as I can tell, went off smoothly, and hopefully that'll be a regular event in our area. And the Lynn County Fairgrounds also doing something similar, but it's really important now that we have some success to let people know what group is next, and that we are making progress. So really appreciate you, you and your team's efforts. It's a lot of confusion out there, and you're doing a great job trying to reduce the amount of confusion. So thank you.
Thank you. Your team's done a fantastic job building this airplane. We're flying it, as we've been saying for the last several months. And it's been an ongoing challenge to keep all the parts in the right places. Thank you. And that's a great transition to Suzanne and April to provide a little bit more on the specifics of our, what kind of vaccine allocations we're getting, and clinic plans, and what's happening next, and what needs you have that we can help support.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good morning. Apologize for being late in arriving. We had some technical difficulties signing on, but managed to get here. And I would say we're, we certainly are working collaboratively with Samaritan Health Services and with Oregon State University on these large events, and planning, of course, multiple strategies for reaching out to people. And in terms of what we need to be able to effectively do that, we're actively working with county leadership with Chino and with Mary Ottley, and with our leadership at the EOC to determine what we need going forward and what kind of reimbursement mechanisms may be coming down the road for that. So we'll definitely have more on that in the near future. But I'll just turn it over to April Holland to talk in more detail about where we are.
Good morning Commissioners and colleagues. Happy to give an update on vaccination efforts. I'll touch briefly on what we've been doing, and then I want to speak specifically about how we conduct our outreach for COVID vaccination scheduling after that. So it's been a little more detail on that piece of it today. So as you may know, Friday will be our clinic day, our mass vaccine clinic day. At Research Stadium, we've got 1,700 appointments that will be scheduled on Friday. We received an allocation of 800 doses geared for educator use, and Samaritan pitched in 900 that we're intending for remaining Phase 1A populations. You also may already know that we administered over 2,000 doses last week. In addition, our rural vaccination clinic planning continues, as well as mobile outreach and getting vaccines into providers' offices and into pharmacies. We're working on all of these pieces simultaneously. And we're limited, you know, by the amount of vaccine that we have. So overarching everything every day is that we find ourselves in a scarcity environment right now. And there's way more people eligible to receive vaccines than there are doses of vaccine right now, as we know. So I'll go into a little bit So I'll go into a little bit of how the EOC conducts outreach for COVID vaccination scheduling when we do have an opportunity. This is different from outreach efforts to community partners to direct eligible people to us or to our survey. So a big part of our job is to share opportunities for scheduling with uh for those currently eligible for vaccination. This work could be divided into two parts. Uh, the people that we know are eligible based on lists that come by the various state or federal agencies. And then the volunteered or self-selected eligibles. And those would come from our vaccine assessment survey. And we utilize both the lists and the survey because the guidance is not inclusive of every type of work or situation. And we don't have a list for every agency or person that may qualify as eligible. So I I am accustomed to and feel most comfortable with precision, as may you. But this is an imprecise process and and uh and our goal is to ensure access to those who are eligible and who want vaccine and to reach out to the vulnerable out there. A person may complete the survey and their agency may already be on a list. We've we've got some duplication, but overall, we don't want to leave anyone behind. So we want to have that community piece where people can uh can be added to our outreach lists. Our current outreach lists of the known eligible that come from those state and federal lists include uh over 200 agencies for Phase 1A. For the Phase 1B educator group, we've got all public and private school districts, 63 licensed childcare agencies, uh licensed exempt family providers and a list of substitute teachers from that pool. And then as for the vaccine assessment survey, it was initially the, a little history to it. It was initially modeled after a smart sheet used by Lincoln County and has since been remodeled and enhanced remarkably, wonderfully, I might add, by several talented folks in the JIC and beyond. And as as Lilia mentioned and as you know, the Benton County Vaccine Page has likewise been updated to provide clarity to those seeking vaccine information. People can see which groups are currently eligible for vaccination and who's coming up next. They can check their eligibility status. They can submit the survey. And if they're not currently eligible, they can sign up with a reevo email address to get updates. Those are, that's great progress. The vaccine assessment survey allows individuals, agencies, or facilities currently eligible to enter a few pieces of information. So if they're agencies, they say what type of agency they're with and the number wanting vaccination. If they're individual, if they're individuals, they say if they're in Group 1A or if they're in 1B educators. And we're starting to add in further groups with with um over 65 populations. And they say how many people in their in their household are are eligible currently and willing to get vaccinated. We also collect information uh through the survey on people who cannot leave their homes and are, we're currently partnering with a few uh local folks, a pharmacy and a medical provider to administer vaccination to homebound individuals. We've received over 3,500 uh survey responses, including most from Phase 1A, about 3,300 for Phase 1A and the remainder from educators. They range from agencies with hundreds of staff to just individuals who don't fall into any of those um clear categories. And as to determining who is eligible, this is built into the survey. When a person attests that they are part of an eligible group and they submit the survey, their contact information will be included in future scheduling messages. So it's built into the survey that uh an individual or agency says, yes, we've reviewed the information, we fit into this group. We aren't doing further um vetting or excluding um at this point. Once a survey submitted, the waiting begins. As I mentioned before, and we all know, we currently have far more people eligible than we have vaccine available. And then when we do have an opportunity for scheduling, as we currently do, we have been, we send out messaging in English and Spanish to all of our outreach lists and all of the survey submissions. And just a note here, because OHA has been allocating vaccine doses for specific use, for example, for this week, 800 doses for educators and the remainder to Phase 1A, we sometimes time the scheduling emails strategically to help ensure that appointments are available and appropriately allocated. These emails include information about the event, a survey link, and instructions. A sense of urgency in scheduling is incorporated into the title and body of the message as the appointments are filled up very, very quickly. I mentioned a few moments ago that we provide scheduling links each time an opportunity arises. This will become problematic over time. Yes, we want to saturate, but we don't want to irritate. So the team is working on solutions to hone the list and determine who has been vaccinated and who still needs an appointment. A recent poll we sent out to determine needs among the survey respondents indicated that just of those responses we received, we heard back from 1,100 people in Phase 1A who still need vaccination. We are um working on some obstacles and 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 smoothing out some uh some barriers that we've encountered along the way. We've never had our EOC liaison group send out thousands and thousands of emails. So we're, we're um currently adjusting and working on solutions to ensure that there are not issues sending out mass emails um as we as we move along. So uh for example, today we're moving to a constant contact platform to uh to better manage um the volume of of messages going back and forth. And then finally, if there's anything we can count on in this pandemic is that things are going to change really soon. The state is working on a scheduling solution as we speak that will probably include a built-in assessment. We're not sure if it's going to work for our purposes, but it's great to know that it's 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 coming down the pipeline. Also, we hope that pharmacies and doctors' offices will be in vaccine administration sites in the near future. We don't want to rely solely on these max vaccine sites, particularly as we move into eligibility for older adults and and the obvious barriers that we're going to face there. And then finally, more vaccines are going to be approved that will lend themselves to broader distribution. We'll have one dose vaccines uh on the table at some point, refrigerator-stable vaccines. This will probably open up the um the willingness and just availability in a in a much, much broader uh fashion that we've seen so far. And I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay, thank you. And I know that one of the biggest problems has been that needs assessment survey and the fact that it's not very intuitive to understand. The English is convoluted and uh unless people concede their group and their identity reflected on our lists, on website, they don't feel that they are eligible, even if they've heard through the grapevine that they are. So I appreciate all of the work that you have done with the with the JIC to try to clean that up and make it much clearer so people don't uh end up calling all over the place to uh get more information. And you're calling everyone but you all, which makes it even harder. So um I appreciate the fact that the loan bank has gotten that much of a call volume. And I'm trying to direct people to that number as well. That's something we can all do to help smooth things out. Michelle Malone?
Yeah, uh follow up to the communication folks is emphasizing that uh being patient is a really good idea. But uh our folks are doing the best that we can with what we've got to work with. But uh another question for you. Well, do you get any any sense that the the shipments are becoming more routine? And uh getting, you're getting better notice that uh how many are coming and and when? I I know not very long ago, it was, well, we find out maybe 24 hours in advance coming. And obviously, that's not enough time to uh schedule for it. So I'm just curious, are we making some progress on um getting uh more actual shipments? What what kind of lead time are you folks getting within the period?
Thank you, and I thank you Commissioner Malone. Yeah, but yes, we are still experiencing short notice allocations. We're we're not at the 24-hour mark any longer, but um we're still receiving our allocation notice around Thursday for the following week's deliveries. So we have heard that sometime really soon, we'll we'll have about three weeks of allocations known in advance. We're hoping that may happen this week, but um we're still waiting on that to 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 be the case. This will really help us uh plan out our, not only the mass vaccine clinics, but our rural and and partner outreach so that people can can start planning their patient populations, the the um the sites, the staffing, um with a little bit more notice. Because it, we're on our toes um already, but we're we're definitely in in quick response mode um with with the way this is rolling out right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Wise, do you have questions?
Well, this isn't, yes, it's more of a general question. One question that I received last week, um someone was wondering, is there any plan yet or do we have any idea of how and when vaccines will go out to homeless populations and unsheltered populations?
That's a, that's a great question, Commissioner Wise. And um our our vulnerable populations team here, we've got some people working on those very questions right now to at least get the pieces into place. We don't have a timeline. We can only sort of look at at what's known for Phase 1B, estimating those populations and then looking forward in in our best guess. But uh we've already begun outreach to our partners and and who serve populations experiencing or people experiencing homelessness and um are are exploring ways to to serve that population.
Great, thank you.
That brings up another question, and that is um the unfortunate fact that folks that are in prisons statewide are so particularly vulnerable to this virus. And I know that uh Womack County right now has a jail outbreak. And our jail is very small. It's not that high a population level. And folks tend to be there for a short period of time. So, but I know that that's been explored also um in terms of what we might do for that specific population. Is there ongoing planning in that arena also?
It it absolutely is a consideration. And as we, as we move forward into those groups, it would be at the at the top of our our checklist to ensure that that incarcerated adults or people incarcerated would be um would be taken care of.
Yeah, I see that undersheriff Fridler is online too. Acting Sheriff Fridler, welcome.
Thanks, ma'am. Uh, yes, well, we have uh explored that. I know our nurse will, she was going to receive training. I haven't confirmed that she has received training and taken care of that. It's going to be a little bit difficult based upon the vaccine and how it uh is stabilized. But uh we have discussed it, we've looked at it. And I, I'm not going to say we're going to be ready, but um I think we're we're headed down that path to be ready.
And sir, we'll connect with you directly as well once, once we have a timeline so that we ensure that 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 folks are taken care of.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um we are behind schedule. Are there other questions for April at this time? If not, I'll give a brief uh moment to Kate Portia. Kate?
Good morning, sorry. I was wrong with the button. Hey, um I will be super brief. We um are continuing to work on our getting PPE out to businesses. We still have taken over the Madison Avenue meeting room and are allowing folks to come in, make an appointment, to pick items up. And we are watching closely the uh news from the feds on the potential for future funding that may be coming down. But we're kind of using this downtime downtime to regroup and um get ready for the next onslaught of what we hope is going to be more funding for businesses. And meanwhile, both Catherine and Heather are helping to serve out at the emergency operations setup on different schedules. So that's the end of our report for us.
One quick question. Are you doing any kind of um data analysis for who has received assistance so far? Whether there are groups of businesses that repeatedly have not received assistance and how how equitably those funds have been distributed based on need?
Yes, in fact, we just got the information last week from Community Lending Works on the breakdown of both the governor's money and the local grant with a breakdown of um the demographics for those. And in fact, Catherine is working on aggregating that data. We may have it ready as early as the next Board of Commissioners meeting where I think we're scheduled to talk about long-range planning and maybe able to talk to you about it there. And if not, we'll, we'll bring it back to you as soon as possible. But yes, we are, we're going to be looking at that really to see what that breakdown looked like in in terms of the goals that you all had and what what the outlay actually looked like. I think we've actually exceeded those goals. But to your point, Commissioner Ogierow, continuing to um look to uh this sort of broader question of are there, are there groups of businesses? Is there a type of business that just has has been missed? Kind of like how I think we filled that gap quite nicely with the the new 2020 businesses that hadn't been eligible for any of the other funding programs. So yes, continuing to look at that.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions for Kate, for her team? Okay. Nancy, it's you and I. We are ready now to move on to item 4.2 on our work session schedule, a discussion of proposed amendments to Benton County Code Chapter 23, which is about solid waste management. Greg Barrett and Daniel Reddick, welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. I will let Daniel take the bulk of this. Just wanted to mention that this has been a uh joint project involving county council and the solid waste program. Daniel has the details, so I'll let him take it away.
Thank you, Greg. Good morning, commissioners. I I just wanted to review some of the proposed draft amendments to Chapter 23 and give you some background. And we're essentially looking for direction and guidance on on how to proceed. The, one of the changes that we made um was essentially recognizing the shift from the Health Department to uh the Community Development Department. And then we also updated some uh of the information around the Solid Waste Advisory Council membership requirements. And that was because uh those membership requirements were recently updated in the SWAC and DSEC bylaws. So we wanted to uh refer to the bylaws for uh some of the membership details. We also updated word choice for gender neutrality throughout the uh Chapter 23. And then lastly, and probably the most significant uh update for the drafted amendment here is the uh language around the use of fees collected under the franchise agreement. And uh that uh is a drafted amendment because um in the recent it might be echoing here. The recent uh, or in Chapter 23 originally, the uh the language around the use of the fees essentially said that the uh franchise fees would be uh used for administration of Chapter 23 and in use of the solid waste program. But the way that the landfill franchise agreement has been uh restructured in its latest rendition, uh kind of flips the way the host surcharge fee and the landfill franchise fee um is structured. And that required an amendment to Chapter 23. So that way, uh the uh county can use some or all. And that required an amendment to Chapter 23, so that way, the county can use some or all of those funds outside of solid waste administration. And I will ask Greg or County Council if they have anything we'd like to add. Vance, go ahead.
So, from a county council perspective, I think Dana did a good job of laying out the primary interest that I had in the amendments, and they come specifically to Section 23.420, which is page 26 in your packet. It is, if you'll recall, the franchise fee under our prior agreement generated in the range of $260,000 to $270,000 in revenue. That was the revenue that was earmarked for supporting the solid waste fund program. Now that the franchise fee is now in the neighborhood of $2 million, it seems like we, there needs to be an adjustment of the language to allow the Board of Commissioners every year to earmark the bulk of our revenue to other programs, hence the change to subsection four. And this is an area where, and it happens very seldom, but Greg and I were not necessarily on the same page, and what you see in front of you is the compromise. My preference had been to simply eliminate subsection four. I believe the county has a strong commitment to the solid waste program and a commitment to funding the program year over year. Greg was reluctant to go that direction, his point being that with this board, he certainly agrees that the commitment is there, but without something in our code, four years, six years, eight years, 10 years down the road, if there's not the same commitment to the solid waste program, there isn't an assurance that the solid waste program will have funding. The compromise, of course, is what you see in front of you, which provides that the moving forward solid waste program will be funded at no less than our current biennial levels. When Mary Ottley reviewed this, she had, she had a little bit of angst over including this in our code. But again, it's a compromise. Certainly, I throw it out for Greg to comment on and for the board to think about. My preference would be to simply eliminate subsection four. Greg, of course, has a very reasonable perspective on ensuring that the program is, has got some level of funding moving into the future where our unknown, where the unknowns lie.
Thanks, Vance. And I would just like, sorry, I'd just like to add that I don't have strong feelings about this at all. I think I just wanted to make sure there was an option for the Commissioners to consider in between going from having the program, you know, fully identified and funded through the code to having it completely taken out of the code. This is a middle ground that ensures some level of funding, but also enables a significant amount of latitude for the county in the budget process. But I agree, it's unusual for a program to be called out for funding in the county code. And so, if that's not the direction that you think is appropriate, then we can remove it from the draft that goes to the public hearing.
I also think it is not necessarily, it's not appropriate to put that kind of language into county code. It doesn't feel right. I understand the intent, and I can certainly understand that our citizen members of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee probably feels similarly about this as well. I almost went in the other direction that, wanting to rephrase that Section 4 of 23.420 in terms of, something about adequate funding for all of the purposes envisioned under this section of the code. We go back up to the purpose clause in the very beginning, it's broader than what's enumerated here. And this list in this point narrows the scope beyond what the purpose of that chapter is, that there is a research component envisioned. And we have at the SWAC table, for instance, talked about potentially partnering with Burton State University about some novel ways to, in the future, mine the landfill and to derive additional value. But so, I'd like to see something that links back to the stated purpose of the code rather than listing narrow set of functions. Or that at a minimum, this narrow set of functions must be funded by the revenues from the landfill fund, or, you know, something, I don't know. I also have a couple of other questions and points that I'd like to finish addressing this one first, so Commissioner Wise, please.
Yeah, I think I'd be in favor of not having subsection four in the code. If it's a budget item, any of our other budget items, it's in the current budget, and I think it would be a fair reply, you know, budget process comes along, meaning to justify the expenditure. And I realize this is historical, but it, to me, it just doesn't make sense to have it in the code versus, well, it's in the budget and we generally don't, no matter who the Commissioners are, and not to zero out existing programs. So, I don't, I guess I don't see the need to have it in the code.
Commissioner Wise?
So, I apologize if this was already said or answered. Is this in a policy somewhere already, because it captured somewhere else?
I don't think the funding component is, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know the bits.
I'm not sure of that.
Okay. If it's not, I mean, maybe could that be a more appropriate place to, if we update a policy somewhere that says what this is trying to say?
We could. As Commissioner Ojero mentioned, the purpose of Chapter 23 up at the top of the code also describes, you know, kind of the same idea of what we're trying to accomplish through solid waste management. And I wish I knew the history of this code chapter better. What I have kind of intuited over the years is that there was a desire to ensure that some portion of the money raised from the landfill was being used for management of waste-related issues, and that seems like a legitimate interest. At the same time, I can definitely see how this is an oddball compared to other programs that aren't called out in county code for particular levels of funding.
Okay. My other question, oh, sorry, did you have a comment along those lines, Zan?
I did want to mention that, as I understand it, there is a discussion of a strategic plan for the solid waste program, and that strategic plan might be the place to include this kind of policy-level decision about funding, because it would set priorities for the solid waste management program and set the scope.
Good point, yes. So, we are planning to develop a strategic plan for the program over this year, this coming year. So, we certainly can work this kind of policy language or priority language into that.
I just want to, again, our technical difficulties are causing Alyssa and I to be very flexible here. I just want to add two additional comments just for your consideration. One is, I remember putting into the code way back in 2000 subsection four. At that time, it was the first time Benton County had had enough money from the franchise to have, to really think about how it was being spent. And I remember at that time, Solid Waste Advisory Committee was pretty adamant that there be programs included in our code that would be funded. And so, that is why subsection four made its way in originally. The second piece is Zan's point about purpose section, and I think if you go to page 17 of your packet, down on subsection 11, one of the purposes of our Chapter 23 is to carry out local government responsibility and authority for solid waste management under state law. So, I think you have an adequate description of our obligation to provide a program. The next step then would be to place somewhere in a policy strategic plan, the funding half of that obligation. So, it could very easily be reallocated to a policy or strategic plan subsection, and then delete subsection four in its entirety, because I think you've got almost everything you need, well, I know you have everything you need in the purpose section to just to give us flexibility on how to administer and apply the solid waste program.
My other question is, can you give me an example of some of the other, what else would we use this money for besides administrative support?
Anything else in the budget.
Anything else, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
And that's the tension. So, yes, we want to make sure that there are some minimum things that need to be taken care of, and one of the continuing and ongoing challenges has been that issue of waste along the roads and of odor emanating from the recovery center and the landfill, and that whole suite of issues around managing the relationship with the landfill. So, I think we need to keep cognizant of that, and in developing a strategic plan with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Disposal Site Advisory Committee, I think we can address those issues. And the other has been the whole issue of waste recovery and recycling and trying to minimize waste and ensure that education and outreach has an appropriate role.
Just to follow up, I want to make it clear, I support the recycling programs and the other programs surrounding the landfill. My comment was just, I don't think it's appropriate to have it in the code, and I think there is just, there's good community support for increased recycling. I know I've had a number of comments on, since China stopped taking our mixed waste, our, it really hurt our recycling effort after decades of making pretty good progress. So, I don't think there's any, should be any concern about support for these type of programs. It's just, my comment was more finding the appropriate place for that language, and I really don't think it's in the code. So, thank you.
The only other points that I have are really mine, that have more to do with department names and word usage. I can happily send those along to the three of you that are working on that language if we are finished with the overall discussion.
That sounds fine, thank you.
Okay. Otherwise, if everything looks good, it's mostly housekeeping and cleanup, and thank you for that.
So...
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So, it sounds like we have direction to proceed to a public hearing. We included a motion, if you wanted to actually make a motion in that regard, but what we're hearing is to remove subsection four and also look at the other minor edits that Commissioner Ojero will be sending, and incorporate those into a final draft to come to a public hearing in the near future.
Do we need to put that into a motion, or?
I'd be happy to take a motion just to memorialize the intended for...
Okay, so moved, is that enough, or do I need to?
I've got the language in the packet, is that...
Yeah, well, I, sure, I wasn't sure, because he mentioned about Zan's additional, but go ahead, you can make it, we can amend it if we need to.
Well, I can specifically address those minor changes. It's to switch the use of the word ensure with an I to ensure with an E to be correct. And there's a reference to the finance division for us, it's not the division anymore, it's the finance department, minor, so.
Well, my motion would be to move to direct staff bearing ordinance for amendments to Chapter 23 and proceed to a public hearing with the intent to remove subsection four and then with the minor edits.
And that would be subsection four of 23.420?
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And this is scheduled, I believe, we have a public hearing date scheduled for March, tell me, Daniel, March 2nd?
March 2nd, I believe.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Speaking of public hearings, we are now going to make an adjustment to our agenda and shift over to our public hearings for the day. And then, we will circle back to item 4.3, the Community Development Year End Review for Monrova, Monrova and Edair Village. So, at this time, I would like to ask Ron Deitch, assuming Greg will stay on, to address the public hearing for adoption of the ordinance number 2021-0299, setting fees for permits and sections and services for Community Development. And I will now open the hearing. Call staff to present.
All right, Ron will be joining us momentarily. I told him I would let him know when we were, there he is, when we were nearing time, and it snuck up on me, so here we are. So, welcome, Ron, we just started. So, I'll let you take it away, but I'll be here also to help answer questions.
So, generally speaking, as we discussed in the work session in December, this is a, probably a long overdue fee increase, the last fee increase being 2010, and essentially, this is a catch-up with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing fees, and a very slight adjustment to the structural fees. So, the overall effect on revenue is not great. It comes out to be about a 6% increase in overall revenue. So, the effect on a single-family dwelling permit, depending on the size, varies of an increase of about 5.5% to 6.5%. The effect on mechanical permits... The effect on mechanical permits for the vast bulk of mechanical permits, although we raised our fees or proposing to raise our fees 15%, the minimum fee for a mechanical permit is not changing. Therefore, for the vast majority of the replacements and installs, the contractors and customers will not be seeing an increase in those permits because they will not break the threshold for an $80 permit. So generally speaking, it's not a huge increase, but it sort of keeps us on more on pace with inflation, along with the slight 2% adjustment on structural fees to make up the difference on the inflationary rate over the last 10 years. So I'm asking you to approve the ordinance, approving the fee increase for the Building Division.
Thank you, Ron. Does this fee increase at this point get us to the point where your costs are covered?
Again, the areas that we were seeing a deficit were primarily in the electrical and plumbing portions of our permits. So this directly addressed the issues where we were falling behind, specifically where we have to contract out for outside help for commercial plumbing and commercial electrical sections.
Okay.
I'd like to also add on that point that covering costs with revenue is like trying to align two sine waves. And over time, yeah, one year we, you know, our revenue might be well above our costs and another year, depending on permit activity, construction activity, revenue might be significantly less than our costs. So it's hard to know for sure, but yes, we believe this will help secure our financial stability over the long term. The last few years, we have operated in the black and are trying to maintain that contingency for future years when the economy won't be as strong.
Thank you. Are there other questions before we take comments from the public? Michelle?
Yeah. I appreciate the explanation of you have fixed costs and you have no control over how many permits come in the door in any particular time. But I appreciate the effort into aligning costs and revenue. And also, like I mentioned in December, it's, I think it's when possible to relatively modest increases rather than talking the large. It's just a good business model because the costs go up every year. And so trying to align that with the revenue coming in. I appreciate this effort and just that little tidbit of, well, it depends on the volume of permits and you have no control over that half of the equation. So thanks for that piece of information.
Any questions for Cliff Weiss?
No, I'm good at this time, thank you.
Okay, Ron, do you have something to add to?
I do not, no.
Okay, are there any comments from the public? Anyone wishing to testify? Okay, hearing then, I will close the public hearing and will entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 2021 days 0299, adopting revised building permit fees and conduct revision of ordinance.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye. Aye. Can I just, can I make a comment really quick? I just wanted to mention that, you know, I am sensitive to raising fees as I'm sure, you know, we all are. But the fees are there for a reason and we need to make sure we're covering costs and not subsidizing those costs with other taxpayer money. So that's my voted yes.
Thank you.
And Erica?
And I do appreciate the fact also, Ron, that you did not increase the minimum fees it is for those much more complex and convoluted cases that the fees in particular do go up, to Nancy's point. So we are ready for that first reading advance, would you do the honors?
I knew you were going to punt it to me. But before I do, Erica, Commissioner Ojero, I think meant to say she was coming out of the public testimony portion of the public hearing, we're still in the public hearing.
Thank you, Vance.
Okay, fine, fine, Commissioner Ojero, I'll do this. Okay, before the Board of County Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of setting fees for permits, inspections, and services provided by Benton County Community Development Department Building Vision, ordinance number 2021-0299. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows, short title, Building Division Fees. And with that, first reading is concluded. The second reading will take place two weeks from today, which is, what, February 16th at the Board's regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you. Well done, Vance.
Zan, you're muted.
You're muted.
Commissioner Ojero, you're still muted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that was the best speech of his life too.
I will close the public hearing in this matter and we will turn to public hearing number two on the matter of transferring jurisdiction to the segment of South 13th Street to the city of Palomar. And invite Nora Beyer to present.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you, I appreciate that. So I came to you on January 5th about the proposal to have 13th Street transferred to the city of Palomar. And at that board meeting, you all set a public hearing for today, February 2nd, to see if there's any public comment or testimony in regards to transferring 13th Street to the city of Palomar. And this, just to recap, is, it was actually requested by the city of Palomar so that way they can get into an agreement with ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation, in order to get their city street scape improvements done, but taking us out of a third party agreement. So it's really, it's, you know, streamlining it for the city of Palomar and we're absolutely fine with transferring a piece of road to the city. So that's my presentation, are there any questions, comments? Okay.
None at this time, it appears. I would like to invite anyone from the public that has an interest in testifying to speak at this time. It's difficult when you can't see a show of hands or people twitching in the audience. Therefore, give people a couple of moments to unmute. Okay, hearing, no interest in speaking to this matter, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve order number D 2021 days 027 to transfer jurisdiction of South 13th Street between Main and Applegate, County Road Number 26250A to the city of Palomar.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I believe that was approved unanimously and we will now proceed to the first reading. And Vance, once again, I would like you to do the honors.
Actually, since this is an order, we do not need to conduct a reading, so we can come out of the public meeting and move right into your next agenda item.
We don't need to conduct a reading on this one? Okay.
No, this is an order.
Awesome, okay, then we will close the public hearing and we will move back to our regular agenda and continue with item number 4.3 from our work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So we will welcome Pat Deppen.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you doing?
Doing pretty well, looking forward to hearing your presentation.
Just, Pat, sorry, before you launch in, I just wanted to say, so Pat's been working for the county and for the cities for two and a half years now, Pat?
Yep, about that.
Yeah, yeah. And just from my perspective, it's been a world of difference having Pat not only helping with county planning work, but especially being the interface with the cities. We're just much more connected and collaborative and communicating about a whole variety of things that are going on in cities. So it's been really good to have him in this role. And he's got a, he's been working on so many things. I think he had to be pretty selective in picking the items to discuss with you today, but I think you'll find some interesting topics here. So thanks, Pat, take it away.
So I hope you all got a report I had submitted. I think it had three attachments to it. So I will kind of go through, I'll try to hit the high points, but I'd be happy to pause at any time you have a question or want a little bit more information on this. Because there's a lot of big things, there's a lot of little things too, and I don't want to take up your time with some of those. But the big thing, starting with city of Palomar, is their update to their comprehensive plan. So it's the 20-year comprehensive plan looking for, you know, how to manage the land and what are the needs and the goals and the strategies that we need to put into place to actually guide development through the next 20 years. So this year has been pretty much taken up by three major reports, our building plan inventory, housing needs analysis, and an economic opportunities analysis. And it led to a lot of revelations about where we need to do some change. We're kind of piggybacking, as you know, there's the, probably the big thing that's really happening in Palomar now is air safety and street scape plan that they're working on finishing the engineering this year and putting out to bid for next year. So that, you know, that is going to be a big change for the city. It's going to be primarily on Main Street between, I think, 15th and 11th, maybe 16th and 11th. So we're trying to piggyback with doing a Main Street plan for that core area, which entails some rezoning because there's some industrial property in there. And then putting some attention into, we actually held some public participation outreaches this year at the farmer's market. We had some in the city hall about picking up a theme for the town and they've kind of settled on a Timbertown theme, which we're all pretty excited about. And I've been working on a design manual for that to help kind of put in it, lay the groundwork or, you know, the foundation for how we want to see the buildings and the Timbertown theme kind of dovetail into the street scape plan. So a lot of that going on, that's been a lot of our focus and it's been exciting because we're getting, you know, we're getting to see a lot more interest and the economy's good. We haven't, I think probably the thing that's probably the most disappointing is these processes, we really like to get the citizen involvement, citizen participation. And it really just hasn't been there this year because of COVID. We're kind of circling back around and we're thinking of new and different approaches to kind of get that. So I'm hoping that that changes a little bit more going in the future of what we're doing here. Some of the other big things that fall in, run in the report is we did a local improvement district for a stretch where we have some light industrial uses off on Landmark Drive. And we're kind of excited with that. In fact, yesterday, we just had some people that were interested. That's Exhibit A2 shows somewhat the benefits of having this EPA brownfield grant that from the Corvallis Consortium, I guess, that was able to do some design work for that project. And we're also, just yesterday, got some interest in people and some industrial uses that want to develop in that north area that still hasn't been partitioned. They're asking what the cost is for them to, you know, be part of that and the timing of when the road is going to go in. I think right now, I think the engineering, I think it's going to be in this year's budget. And I believe we'll put it out to bid probably next January and be built next summer, which people aren't so happy with the timeframe of it, but it just needed, it's not even really going to get looked at until the next budget year. So. And, you know, there's still a lot of stuff going on. I just wanted to point out that planning cases did go down, 2019 was, I think, the first full year that I was here in this position. And it was extremely busy for all three cities, but especially Palomar, we had 29 land use cases just on their own, just pretty much myself and Chris and Ruth worked on those. And down to 17 for this year, so still not too bad. But some good, so there's some decent developments going on with, we got a new little restaurant going into downtown. It was, there was an old building that got demoed. It's going to be a restaurant wine tasting right next to Citizens Bank by 15th Street. They, I've talked to them already and they're, we talked to them about the Timbertown theme and they're excited about that too. And that's how they're kind of designing and going to propose their building, you know, theme to be. And let's see, some of those. Anything else that's exciting? So, I mean, there's, we've got some new housing going down on 19th and Chapel or some townhouses, well, new townhouses going on in that corner, which is kind of where a lot of our housing development is going on. Mill Pond Crossing down on 19th or 15th and Chapel is already built out phase one and phase two. Now all the houses are sold, but they're all built all the way down to Chapel. So there's like over, I think, 60 now houses that are built for in Mill Pond Crossing. And there's over, I think, a dozen and a half in Newton Creek, which is just a little bit. bit east of Millpot. So residential development is doing very well down here. There's a lot, there's actually been a waiting list for a lot of the, a lot of the homes. I guess they're, I guess fairly decent for starter home prices, but I don't know if you call $350,000 a starter home price, but that's what they're telling me. So seems to be they're doing well and they're going on very, very strong, so. Also, we have some interest from the Sullivan family who is associated with Allica and Nova Dynamics, and they're a software company, and they're building, I'm not sure if you guys remember where the Letman project, the RV park is going, off of 19th just south of the railroad tracks. So that, so this project is going in just across the street. It's going to be a couple of phased project. They're looking to start with maybe three good, maybe, maybe six to eight thousand square foot buildings to start with. There's a lot of wetlands that they're dealing with there. They're also benefiting from the Brownfield Coalition Grant too. We got them on Phase 1 and Phase 2. It's helping out with some of the background and the groundwork. Now, they're currently in the county, so we're going to have to do an annexation for them, so we're working on that. And they've already actually been working with the city getting, preparing their infrastructure connections down through 12th Street. So that project is moving along. We did have, we did get contacted from Corvallis Clinic, looking at a couple of sites. One is the one that I, the picture that I've showed you, that was kind of their promotion and what they wanted to do. It's another annexation, a piece that would have to be annexed. And they were looking to see what type of infrastructure they would be able to, or what they would be required to do, streetwise improvements. And because of what Landmark did with building their apartments just to the east of them, there is a utility reimbursement zone there, so they'll be able to just tap right into that. So they won't have to worry, they'll have immediate hookup if they decide to build there at one, anything that they have to deal with, ODOT or the city in particular. So, do I just jump to Adair Village? Adair Village has been a little bit slow in 20...
Okay. Can we, can I just ask if there are any questions from the Commissioners about Philomena and development issues in Philomena? Nancy?
Sure. Could you just repeat, which property did you say would be going under annexation for Philomena?
So the two, the two properties, the two last projects, the one with the Sullivan, the one off of 19th Street, just opposite where the Letman RV Park is going, still south of the railroad tracks. That piece is, would be required to come in under annexation. And then the piece that's in between the Landmark Drive and the Boulevard Apartments is also, is a little section that kind of dips down, is still outside of city boundaries. So if Corvallis Clinic was to follow through with that piece, which I think they're in some conversations with now, that would have to be annexed. But they're actually already also, they're also looking at a piece that is just east, it's the vacant piece just east of where Nectar Creek is. They're also looking at that piece, which also is well set up for infrastructure for them to come in. They're looking to propose a 10,000 square foot building, so.
Okay. And you might not know this, but I'm just curious, last I heard of Philomena's last annexation, they still put it to a vote. I'm just curious if anyone has a sense if they are still wanting to put their annexations to a vote, even though, you know, the Senate bill that passed, or if it is going to come down to the new city council?
I don't believe, that'd probably be a better question for Chris. I don't believe they've talked about maintaining that requirement. I think they're just going to follow the state law or they won't need to take it out to a vote, they can just bring it through as a quasi judicial process, you know, through planning commission and city council.
Sure, yeah. Thank you. That was more out of just curiosity and I just found it strange they still put it to a vote last time when they didn't have to.
Yeah, I know that I've been having a conversation with Jim Brewer about another piece of property and how that might come into the City of Philomena, and the conversation has been around the city council approving an annexation request. So with regard to moving forward, I do believe Commissioner Weiss that the city is looking to the new state statute, which pretty much forbids voter approved annexations.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on to Adair Village, if there's any more questions. So on Adair, like I said, it was a pretty slow year. We did an LA vacation that kind of...
Pat, I think you still have any questions?
I just wanted to follow up on the RV park. Could you expand on that update a little bit? I just want to remind the Commissioners that that park will likely have some impact on our fairgrounds, RV park, but any update you can give there, Pat, in more detail?
No, it's actually been kind of radio silent. I know it's in the engineering phase. They, you know, they did get appealed from the decision, and that took quite a bit of time, and I think they were moving a little bit slowly through the engineering process. And I still think it's there. I think there's just that land, there's a lot to deal with. I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure they got through all of the state agency reviews and appeal periods, so I'm pretty sure it's, you know, green light, it's going to go forward and move forward. I haven't heard of any changes. Nothing's been brought back for any minor modifications or anything like that. We did, you know, part of, part of approval was to have them create a bus stop outside of their main entrance up there on 19th, and we just approved Phase 3 of the Forest Meadows. Mobile Home Park up just a little bit north of that on the east, on the west side of 19th Street, and we got them to put a piece of, a piece of property or a piece, part of the property aside for a bus stop there. And the city just got a $20,000 grant for some bus shelters. So right now, the bus route doesn't go up that way, but just anticipating with the increased growth in the Mobile Home Park and the RV Park, to get the bus route to go up there, and we got a couple shelters. So we're looking a little bit ahead there. But, yeah, nothing more I can really give you on the RV Park because it's, I think it's just in this very, very long engineering review process.
Thank you.
And so Adair, last year we did get the five acre piece in the center of the town successfully annexed in. We brought it in as commercial. It still has the Parks of Perpetuity covenant on it that was placed on it back when it was transferred to the county in '73, and then subsequently transferred to the city in, I think, 2018. And so we're still working through Department of Interior, the federal land exchange process, which is going to be a very long process. There's a lot of reviews that are associated with that. We're kind of, we've got two consultant firms working with us on it because we realize just how important it is that we can get through this process and do an exchange. The piece that we're exchanging, I think, is our, by Exhibit B, which shows that the city has a piece of property industrial zone that abuts right up to E.E. Wilson, and our proposal is to trade out, at this point, not dealing with any type of value situation. We're just doing acre for acre right now. We haven't got to the appraisal point yet, but what we're doing is, we're looking at a piece that's adjacent, we're going to tie it into their trail system there. We're actually proposing to put like repair station, kind of a vermiata or picnic area in there, so we're kind of adding a little bit of value to that and tie it in, kind of a little rest of the area. Whereas if you ever walked to that, that park, there really isn't anything up there like that, so we'll probably have something that will draw attention to it, let people know it's there. So we're working through that. Callaway Creek started Phase 3, doing really well. They're completely sold out of Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 3 is showing fantastic. There is a lot of push and pressure for us to, because they want, they want to continue to build there and they want to expand beyond their Phase 4 and continue that development all the way down to Crane Road just south of them. And, but we're kind, we're at a point where we can't, that's outside of the urban growth boundary, so we'd have to do an urban growth boundary expansion and the, which, you know, that allows you to expand, you know, with the process. The numbers really ain't there, but we spoke with Portland State University, we've got a consultant on board, so we're working with them to bring those numbers up to where, you know, showing that we really are far below our 20-year supply of land. So we're hoping in March we get the preliminary numbers and they'll be in our favor, and if so, then we should be able to do UGV expansion to the south, so. And that will be a big, another big part for continued growth in Adair and, yeah. But also, and just to circle back to that downtown piece, that six piece, that's that five acre Parks and Perpetuity piece, which has got another acre of property right in the middle of it, which is a fourplex. That whole area, the plan is to make that the Adair Village Downtown. So once we get the Parks and Perpetuity lifted, it's already zoned correctly, we'll have to probably do some studies and probably some design work and how we want that laid out, and probably also be working on a design manual there for how we want the buildings in downtown to appear. I think we'll start an urban renewal district there, so that's the whole. So I'd say, yeah, there's some big, some really big projects, super important to the future and the growth of Adair, but just very slow moving, long, long-term projects with a lot of continued work to be done on them.
Yeah, the Parks and Perpetuity process is definitely a big obstacle, but Chris, I mean, Pat has been working that one hard, and I'm glad to hear that there are a couple of consultants on board to help put together the documents to support the process because it's a heavy lift. One of the questions that does arise, however, in terms of the growth of Adair is the, that sense of just a big Corvallis suburb popping up and having lots of low-density housing and that feeling of sprawl where we all are part of the reason less so many people move here is because of those agricultural landscapes and the vistas that they provide. So in terms of expanding into exclusive farm use land, are there, is there any vision or planning by Adair Village to also provide more high-density housing and housing at a lower price point?
Well, in the, in the area south of where Callaway Creek is now, I haven't seen that brought up or heard of being brought up there. Me and Pat talked a little about doing maybe some light industrial along 99, and maybe having some high density there would be a good buffer into the single-family neighborhoods there. But definitely in the downtown area, where the commercial district that we just talked about, so we do want to, we would do want to set up some, some good retail office space along William R. Carr, just to have, you know, some downtown service establishments there, so people don't have to travel so far to Corvallis, you know, to get some of the simple needs done. But on the west side there behind Jason to where that, the big radar building is and all that, that whole back of those lots, the plan is to have probably three-story apartment buildings there. So initially, we were looking at maybe doing some townhomes and some condo type things, but we weren't really going to get to density, and we agree with you, you know, we do need to have a little bit more of a mix there. So, yeah, I think that whole area will probably be set up for, in zone for higher density.
Okay, that's good. And the other question I have about Adair is how much community engagement has there been in all of this process up there?
So with the Parks and, so with the Parks and Perpetuity process, there really hasn't, there really hasn't been anything. And as far as the design of the downtown, we really haven't embarked on that yet because, because of the Parks and Perpetuity and not knowing the timeframe of that. There's a lot of studies that have been done in the past, and we have them all, and they all have a little bit of different flair to them, but, yeah, I think once we get the Parks and Perpetuity lifted from this, we could get the exchange. Before we jump into anything, we'll definitely have some design work, is already committed to, to getting some urban planning design group together to do some drawings and some renderings for how it's going to look, and hopefully at that point, we will, since we're going to have to do a design manual and a whole probably set of code, development codes for that, that'll definitely be going out to public. And it'll be nice, I mean, I even talked to Pat about it, I think I'd be looking forward to seeing what the new residents down in, that are coming in from, you know, filling in Callaway Creek, what they, what they're, you know, anticipate or what they want to see for their downtown. Because it really is creating the downtown out of scratch.
Yeah, and the downtown is one piece of it, and then the other is just the complexion of the city and the way it's evolving right now in terms of socioeconomics and with the starting housing crisis, it's a particular demographic of the county communities. And so I just was wondering whether there had been public discussion in Adair Village about having more of a mix, not only apartments but other types of... about having more of a mix, not only apartments, but other types of, that missing middle housing duplexes and triplexes and such that would bring more diversity into the community. But Commissioner alone had a final question.
Just on the higher-density housing, what I remember from Pat here was the downtown retail office on the first floor and then, I don't know if it was three stories or what the plan was, but there's a vision for density. But the discussion I, I remember was looking for higher-end units so that the people that were there would have the resources to support the retail in downtown. So, you know, I don't know if that's written in stone, but yes, more density, no, not really aiming for affordability, at least in the downtown development.
Well, we're definitely trying to get a mix. I mean, that's, and, you know, in any good downtown, you're going to have a good mix of the connectability, you know, densities will definitely help support a downtown, help support the businesses, but you want good connections to the neighborhoods. And you want to have the ability for even people that are maybe even just outside the city limits, you know, that there's stuff there that's, you know, useful to them. Whether it be a new post office that the city needs, just to a banking, you know, institution or, you know, a salon or, you know, maybe just a little slightly bigger store. And, you know, we're hoping that the design manual, what we're looking for is minimum two stories, kind of an old historical look. So it will be kind of a throwback to, to, you know, an older style downtown is what I think Pat envisions it to look like. And, yeah, hopefully it'll spur some people to come out there and use it for, for office space, you know, and other type of service industry that, you know, just, just supports, supports the area. I mean, we're almost doubling their, doubling, you know, the population there in, you know, the next five years. So, yeah, we're going to try to do it responsibly, but I, I agree, there's got to be a mix of density housing styles and availability there and price point because we can't just beat this rich, you know, $400,000 house bedroom community, just.
Yeah. That would not feel good. Okay. Thank you for the summary on Adair Village and on to Monroe.
So Monroe's doing, doing very well. Monroe needs a lot of work, needs a lot of attention, but it hasn't been able to get it. There's, there's been a lot of stirrup there with no city manager to have, you know, to support and be kind of a liaison for me, so it's been a little bit of difficult. I've taken on some of those roles. They had in the middle of the summer, you know, the mayor and council person quit, they kind of threw stuff into mayhem. But the Red Hills Development, some of the residential development is still moving along. Again, we're trying to take advantage of the Brownfield Grant that Corvallis got, and we've got a developer that's interested now in the old Brickyard property to do a possible 100-site mixed-use project there between single-family and higher-density apartments along the river. Unfortunately, this part of the city was, wasn't part of the Riverside plan. So I think if we, if this thing does move forward and there's still interest, they're, it's just kind of moving along a little bit slower than, than we hoped. They're doing their due diligence. If I'll do maybe a more of a sub-area plan, bringing that in contact with the Riverside Project. Riverside Project is probably about two-thirds of the way through. It's really, I think what's going to come out of that is more of a design for the downtown. It's going to have some river access points to it. Probably have to follow it up with the design manual and a little bit more specifics into how they want it to look because they're not getting into the regulatory area that as much. I mean, they're talking about signage and parking and lighting and stuff like that. But it's, it's turning, I think, in more to a 99 project than it is a riverfront project just because access to the river is, is more difficult than you would think or you could imagine. So many different individual property owners, and a lot of that property is actually very, very narrow. So we have some access points from city-owned property, but opportunity beyond that, I think is going to probably take a little bit of work and maybe a piece-by-piece process. Steve Martininko, I don't know if you've heard his name, but he's the Public Works Director down there. He's been filling in. He's doing a fantastic job. They both, they lost both of their administrative staff too, by the way. I don't know if you've heard that. So, you know, and I was, I probably and Greg can contest to this, I was, because of all that stirrup, I was putting a lot more time into what I was being paid for and devoted to them just to help Steve for that place just to not collapse into, you know, a more serious mess. And I think it, it started to get into, but it's, it's kind of leveled off a little bit now. Steve is kind of in control and I backed off a little bit more and, and just focusing on stuff that I, you know, where I needed and making sure things are moving along there as well. I think that's it.
What are you, have you had any time for your county work or what, what does that piece of your time look like? And sorry, Pat, you can bow up.
So I still, so my typical week is I, I spend three days in Philomath, where I'm sitting right now in this office. I can do the work from Monroe and Adair from here for the most part. I still travel down to Monroe quite a bit, not as much as Adair. And then the other two days, Wednesday and Thursday are spent in the county. I do Wednesdays pretty much, the planner I call. So I field all the phone calls and let all the other planners get some stuff done. That they're dealing with what I deal with every Wednesday, it's, it's usually takes up about three-quarters of your day. Answering phone calls and following up with stuff and doing a little bit more research. And granted, because I'm, I'm probably not as seasoned as, as though it takes me a little bit longer of the research, but it's such an amazing group of people, support group. They got my back so much, they just help out. Nobody, you know, considers me a pest, I think, at this point. They're all pretty, very helpful and it's been one of the best places that I've ever actually worked in my career. So, you know, very nice. And then Thursdays, the day I'm off the phones, I just work on land, land use cases as, you know, as they're given to me, so, or assigned to me. So I can usually knock one of those out every couple of weeks or three weeks. So do my best to help them out and then anything else they need, I'm always willing to step up and work. So I, I think the, I think the combination is, is working well. Greg could probably attest to that. You know, not falling behind or doing well. Like I said, the group, the group of people there, I, I think the morale, just with the people inside and outside the office and the people that work outside and come in, yeah, I don't, I honestly speaking, I probably haven't been in a place that had better morale and, and leadership than, than this place. So I think that says a lot for Greg and Lindsay.
I just wanted to follow up and say, as Pat described, his job is a juggling act, working three different jurisdictions as the primary planner, each of them with its own complexities, as you've seen, its own public and its own politics, not to mention its own codes, and then also working for county, county taxpayers, county property owners, answering questions and working on land use applications with yet another set of codes. So he has done a tremendous job of, of getting involved in each of those jurisdictions and understanding the codes and being able to contribute in a meaningful way. So we're very fortunate.
It sounds like, I appreciated the fact, Pat, that you used the word week and you spoke about Philomath and Adair Village and Monroe, who might be a little bit if you're at the moment, but, you know, we'll see how that goes. But no, it sounds like things are going really well. I, this was an experimental position and I think that it has been extremely beneficial so far from what I can see, and it was very, very timely in terms of the development demand all around the county. So both Pat and Joe had further questions. Pat, you're liable first?
Sure. Back to Monroe, I have some discussions of their city water situation is less than ideal. How does their water supply and, and access fit in with the development that's, looks like it's coming?
I don't know the specifics on the water. I know it's, it's very tight. There, there is capacity to service the, the development to the north there in the There is, the connections are on the west side of 99, so there, there is the ability to, to get water up in there and we would probably loop it around, which we've, we've talked some preliminary, we've showed some preliminary ways of doing that. So I think the water is going to be fine. I think what's really the issue with, in the northern part of the town, is the sanitary line, it just goes pretty much to Mill Street, and there's a lot of I and I in there, there's a lot of infiltration of stormwater that's taking up a lot of the capacity. And we probably have to be some work done or some upgrades done to the pump station that's south of the school. So I think they're having more problems with their sanitary capacity than they, they are with their water at this point, from my understanding. And the cost to that, it's going to need a complete, it's going to be, it's going to be a complete new line that's going to have to go in if the Brickyard gets developed. And I think it's something more like 1,400 to 1,600 feet. And we were looking into ways or, and we didn't get really that far, but we were looking, talking about SDCs, how they, you know, how the city could possibly bond for it and get it kind of in there and ready to go and then have the SDCs pay back the bond. But that's not my specialty, but I, I know that there are certain things like that that we're, we're looking on ways to, to fund this because it can't all, it can't all be put on the developer. They just, it just wouldn't be cost-efficient for them.
And then there's a suite of rural development funding sources for this kind of infrastructure as well from the U.S. Department of Agriculture and funds from the state of Oregon Business Oregon as well. So I think that we just need to stay on top of all of those and make sure that, work with Kate Portia and her team as you move forward with Monroe to make sure that they're supported. But I know the new mayor, Dan Sheets, works pretty closely with Kate and her team, so I suspect they'll be on top of that. So do you have another question, Pat or Joe?
Just to follow up, and I agree with your comment saying about good timing, was, was there a legislative mandate to have planners in these smaller jurisdictions? I was, I vaguely remember something about legislative change. Was that, have you got the impetus for your position?
I'll, I'll address that. Pat, I think what you maybe be thinking of is regarding building inspection and where we are required through changes at the state level to have on-staff building inspectors and in certain positions for each jurisdiction rather than contracting for that purpose. Pat's position came about more as a result of need expressed by the cities and an opportunity that we sought to try and coordinate that. So not necessarily that it's mandated by the state, but, so each, each city is required to have a planning commission and to have staff for that. But this was more of a, of a homegrown solution to, across the cities, to provide professional planning services.
And to have consistency and advice from the county to the small cities rather than having them deal with a different planner for all of their different needs and creating more confusion and challenge in terms of direction. So having Pat play the role for all the small cities was, I think, a really good move. And I'm glad you were able to, you're, you're a good juggler.
Good, my bad, thanks.
Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Hoosier, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I realize we're running long here, but it's really important to recognize, Pat, when Greg and I were working with the town managers to conceive this particular position, Greg told me he found the perfect person to hire for it, and I couldn't agree more. I received nothing but praise from the city managers about the work that Pat does, and I'm really beginning to see it pay off. And so my hats off to Pat. He's just done an outstanding job. I think this was a unique concept. It was, I think, a perfect concept at the time, and I see it continues to work effectively.
Thank you for that. Joe?
Thank you.
Nancy? I'll try to keep this short, but I'll just say when I first heard a few years ago that the county was moving forward at this position, I was very happy, even excited. And my question is, as part of the scope of your work, have you, do you ever get to or have you identified any needed code changes for the incorporated areas that you work with?
Oh, yeah. I mean, when I first, when I first came out, I think it was in like the first three months, we probably had a dozen that we tried to push through and, you know, and while in Monroe and Philomath for sure, and we were successful. Some of them did make it, some, but some that were needed. In fact, I got three that I'm taking to planning commission, just introducing three new code changes. I'm taking to planning commission, just introducing three new code changes, um, in Philomena, um, on the 16th. Uh, one is landscaping, one is building materials, and the other one I think is just the definition for an RV park. Um, that's kind of a, uh, remnant of the past of, of the RV, of the Lemon Project. Um, but the, the need for the, um, but yeah, to answer your question, yes. And, and there's, we're always coming across this, the need for landscaping, um, I'm pretty much redoing the whole landscaping section for Philomena because of, on this residential development, um, we're seeing that there was, there was some, there was code, you know, listing out what the individual, um, houses should have, but nothing on, um, large development as, as a whole. Um, but then really the landscaping code for the single family house wasn't strong enough and people were getting away with not putting inside, just putting in bark, um, you know, bark mulch and a couple of plants and calling it good and getting away with it. Um, so it was just really unclear. So they're really just kind of scrapping it and, and, uh, doing a whole new landscaping one. And then the building materials one is, is really a stop, a stopgap. Um, there's gonna be a lot more emphasis on the building materials in Philomena, but right now is, is spurred on because somebody wanted to put in a metal building in our downtown and we had nothing to stop it. So, um, so we're introducing something there as kind of a stopgap before we really get into the whole design manual and the street scape timber town theme. So yeah, we, whenever necessary, we certainly will bring stuff forward. And all of this, um, the Riverside Plan, there's gonna be a lot of code development's gonna come out of there. Um, I think we'll probably take a shot at the entire Philomena code once the master plan or the comprehensive plan is done. And, um, and then in Indira with that whole downtown area, um, there's gonna be specific design manual and code written directly for that. So yeah, there's a lot of work to, you know, to still tackle ahead of us. Um, it's just getting right now through more of the comprehensive plan amendments first on all these and the Riverside Plan then. And the Riverside Plan big backs off of their highway corridor overlay zone two. So, um, that also was put in place for, just specifically interest building materials and layout and stuff for, uh, development along 99 there. So yeah, there's a lot of work to do and that, that takes time and that takes a lot of outreach and promote.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Um, with all of this growth, uh, one of our participants in the audience has brought up the fact that the school districts need to be brought into the conversations because adding this many homes inevitably we're gonna put some more pressure on schools and shift the pressure from one geography to another. So hopefully you're speaking with Monroe School District and Corvallis School District, Philomena, as, as move through the process as well. Um, and thank you. This has been a great update. It's much appreciated.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do this every year. I was, I was doing this for the last place I worked, you know, giving kind of a yearly, just a yearly update. Um, maybe it doesn't have to be as in-depth conversation, but at least, um, at least providing you with a nice list of stuff that's going on at high points. So.
It's good to know. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for your questions and comments as well. Very helpful.
Okay. And with that, we, we are done with our morning of work sessions, but we, I would like to take a five minute break before we dive into our regular business meeting. So we'll return at, um, 11:15. Back from recess and the first item of business in our, um, business meeting is to approve the consent calendar, which includes one set of minutes from January 5th of this year.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
So do I not, that includes the minutes I'm not supposed to vote on?
No, no, one set of minutes, January 5th.
Oh, okay. Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The consent calendar is approved. Nancy, we do have two sets of minutes later on the agenda on your old business that you are not eligible to vote on.
Okay, okay. I remember that now.
Okay. Uh, next up is, um, proclamations. Welcome, Johan.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Um, I have the proclamation for Black History Month and Black Futures Month. Um, I don't know if you want me to read that to you or it's a plan, but, but yeah, perfect. So I'm very excited. All right. So let's start all right. This February, we celebrate and honor the history of Black and African Americans through Black History Month. This year's theme is the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity celebrates the contributions that African Americans have made to American history and their struggles for freedom and equality, deepens our understanding of our nation's history. The Association of the Study of African American Life and History, ASALH, um, was founded in 1915 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson. In February 1926, the first Negro History Week was celebrated and set in February to include the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African Americans. In 1976, the week was expanded to Black History Month, also known as African American History Month. ASALH recognizes this year's theme of the Black Family with the following. The Black Family has been the topic of study for many disciplines, history, literature, the visual arts and film studies, sociology, anthropology, and social policy. Its representation, identity, and diversity have been reverenced, stereotyped, and vilified from the days of slavery to our own time. The Black Family has known no single location since family reunion to genetic ancestry, searchings testify to the spread of family members across states, nations, and continents. The family offers a rich tapestry of images for exploring the African American past and present. Benton County in Oregon has a history we must not forget. While Oregon was founded with a ban on slavery, our constitution also forbade free Blacks from living in Oregon. To Oregon territory, territory and the state had Black exclusion laws that made it difficult for, or impossible for free Black families to settle in Oregon. This creates systems of inequity that we still have reverberations today. Redlining, homelessness, and environmental racism are just a few examples of the many issues Black Oregonians face due to our history of discrimination and prejudice. While the Black exclusion laws have ended, we cannot move forward without acknowledging our past and addressing our present. This past year, we saw a worldwide movement advocating for love, respect, and support of Black lives. We continue to see Black communities disproportionately harmed by the COVID-19 pandemic nationwide, and we must continue to take action supporting the health and safety of our Black families and communities. The Black Family, Representation, and Identity and Diversity shows up in our own country, Monroe County. We celebrate the Black pioneers such as the Gorman's. Hannah and her daughter Eliza were Corvallis community members who bought land from a Corvallis founder, William Dixon. They ran a laundry and sewing business from their home. These Black pioneers are beloved by the community. When Eliza passed in 1869, the Corvallis Gazette reported that she will be missed and her loss mourned by nearly every single family in Corvallis. The Gorman's are one of many Black families. We celebrate this Black History Month. We celebrate Black families and diversity and representation, including blended families and chosen families. All of our Black families and communities in Benton County are to be celebrated, including community members who are LGBTQ+, disabled, houseless, veterans, or hold any other intersectional identities that represent a diverse Black by diaspora. There's a commitment to serving these diverse families that we also recognize February for the first time as Black Futures Month. Black History and Black Futures Month work together to honor the achievements, strife, and challenges of Black Americans in the past while looking forward towards equal equity, diversity, inclusion, and justice. Black Futures Month celebrates art, culture, and science that brings us all towards collective beloved community. The Benton County 2040 Initiative fits the vision of Black Futures Month by encouraging us all to work towards thriving and vibrant communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve this proclamation? So just let them know.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Johan. And, um, I'm, uh, looking forward to looking up to the aspirational proclamation that we've just made.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
Uh, we are now moving on to our old business and the first item is 7.1 in the matter of approving the statewide transportation.
Commissioner Ojero, I believe that you're muted.
Sorry about that. Here I am rambling on. Our next item is, is old business, 7.1 in the matter of approving the statewide transportation improvement fund, uh, 2022, 2023 formula, Lisa Sisher from, uh, Steve Corvallis, Brad Dillingham, Steve Corvallis, and Gary Stockoff, of course.
Thank you, Chair Ojero. Um, is it possible for somebody to allow me to screen share? It's not a big deal if not, but, um, it would be great if I could.
Erica, you should be seeing that momentarily.
I do see it. And let me find, okay. See if I can do this properly. Can you see my screen? Yes. Is it, uh, we're getting there. It looked like a cover, the cover page of the presentation.
You've, we've got it.
Gotcha. Okay. I'd like to hide this other deal.
We can't see anything else.
Okay. Perfect. Um, and it's not much of a presentation. Uh, two weeks ago, we, we brought this list of projects to you for the statewide transportation improvement fund, um, formula plan projects for the next biennium. This is money that comes from the state, the statewide transit tax and we, um, it, it represents projects from our area, public transportation service providers, which include Corvallis Transit System, Benton Area Transit, uh, the Philomena Connection, which is operated by the city of Corvallis, the, um, city of Albany, which operates both Albany Transit Systems, serving, of course, all of Albany, but, but also North Albany. And they also operate the Lynn Benton Loop, which serves our, our region. our region, and finally, the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. And so the plan of projects that we brought to you looks like this, and this is a ranked, prioritized order of projects that your STIF advisory committee recommended to you. And at the work session, we went through sort of the process that was used to come up with the initial ranking, and this is what the committee eventually decided on. And so ODOT is awaiting your approval of this plan of projects, and then we can submit it to ODOT. It's already drafted and sort of ready to go, although possible to make changes in the final list pending what happens today. I do want to point out that a number of these projects are tied to matches that are for discretionary projects. So the state runs two grant projects related to the STIF money. One is formula, and the other is discretionary, and the local qualified entity, which is Benton County, runs the formula process, whereas ODOT itself runs the discretionary process. And so we didn't talk about... This is our county, and so the STIF committee reviewed them, put them in a ranked order, and three of them are on this list because they're related to matches. So one of those is the Benton Area Transit camera system that we've applied for a grant to get and put on all our buses. And there's a, so you'll see here, the full project is BAT 9 in the gray. The match project is BAT 4. It's an either/or, so if we get the grant, all we need is the match. If we don't get the grant, that $100,000 is the full cost of the project. Another project like that is the COGS OSU Mobility Hub Design. And again, it has a full project cost and a match if they get discretionary grant. And then the third one is our service pilot project on Highway 99W. That's the implementation of the study that the COGS did in the first STIF cycle to do kind of a feasibility study and a needs assessment for that service. So we've got a pilot project that ODOT is pretty excited about. One of the discretionary projects, I'll just go to the discretionary project list here. So that Highway 99W corridor pilot service was the top priority for the STIF advisory committee. Again, these are discretionary projects, so applications didn't really run through us. They ran, they went to the state. Their second project was the Yamhill part of this because it is intended to go ultimately from Junction City to McMinnville. And so it's kind of a, similar to the Costa Valley, it's jointly operated by two adjoining counties, well, with Polk in between us, and Polk County will be involved in the planning for that pilot. And then the third one is called Addressing Regional Transit Network Gaps, and that's a bigger project than you see on the formula list as COGS 2 and COGS 3, the mobility hubs. This project number three, Addressing Regional Transit Network Gaps, includes that project, and it also includes a planning element to it. The COGS is not asking for maps for that planning project, so it didn't show up on our discretionary list specifically. You'll see our vehicle cameras there, and then another COGS project for technology improvements for their, basically for their call center. So this is the program of projects that, again, some of them are ours, some of them are our partners, and some of them are just, in the case of the Yamhill County one, it touches our county even though it's not somebody that we often see in our project list. And so the next step for both of these would be to turn them into the state, and then the state expects to work through their process, and we would hope to see agreements in place with ODOT by July 1. The only other thing I kind of want to draw your attention to, and probably did it last time, is at the very bottom of this, you'll see ALL1, and there are two different numbers because if we get our discretionary grants, all we need is match, and so that changes, you know, depending on if we get those discretionary grants or if we have to fund some of those projects in full. But that's kind of a bucket, if you will, that ODOT is letting us set up, that if things change for us throughout the biennium, we have the ability to use that project, which is unanticipated projects of regional significance that we can use, you know, with ODOT approval, we can use it to meet a need that we did not anticipate, or if there's a project that the cost increase that was unanticipated, we can go into that. And the reason it's so high is we had a lot of unspent money from this first biennium. Otherwise, this is probably a one-time thing. I would not expect this sort of catch-all project to be so big in future. And that's all I really have, and I would entertain questions. I'm going to stop screen sharing. Well, maybe I'm not. I can't see you all, but I can live with that.
Okay, so that all number one is really a COVID artifact to some degree, but we would expect moving forward in future that we would have some contingency dollars and opportunity dollars, but not at this magnitude?
Yes, exactly.
Commissioner Lo, I saw that you had a question.
More of a comment, but I really appreciate the kind of not emphasizing automobiles, and there are good transit systems in Corvallis, Albany, Salem, Eugene, and what quite a few of these projects do is help connect those systems so they're not so much of an island. And I was at a statewide NPO meeting last Friday and going over some of the ODOT priorities, and it seemed like there's a pretty good trend. We've got to keep up our existing road systems, but transit can really have some advantages, especially considering the situation we're in where increasing number of people are economically stressed, and these projects can really help that. And I appreciate the forward-looking vision. Right now, transit ridership is way down because of COVID, but we've got to look ahead and be prepared, and this is a great list of projects. Looking forward to following the progress.
Agreed. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Not a question, but just a quick comment that I appreciate, the information in the staff report. There was a whole page dedicated to the, explaining the process and the dates and what happened at each meeting. I really appreciate that. Sounds like the process is working. It's work that, you know, the commissioners don't have to spend time worrying about. So thank you for doing that work, and thank you to the committee. Yeah, so I think, I feel comfortable accepting it as is and not making any changes. And I can make a motion unless there's any other questions.
Be happy to indicate that.
All right, let's see. I had it, and then I scrolled up to check one other thing. Maybe I don't have the motion. Pat, do you have it? Or I'm looking for it.
I move to hereby accept the Benton County's advisory committee's funding and ranking recommendations for formula fund projects to be included. Find the order.
Second.
Okay. Wait for the discussion. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to seeing those agreements in place, unless you're at first.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for all your great teamwork, work with our committee members.
I just want to say, your committee is so fantastic. They are, you should have a lot of confidence in your committee. They put the time in, they show up, they read the materials. They're really good.
That's great. Glad to hear it, feel like that kind of engagement. Okay, moving on. We will now take up item 7.2 in the matter of approving the Children and Family Outpatient Mental Health Treatment Program. Danielle Brown. Welcome.
Aye, good morning, Commissioners. So two weeks ago, we talked about the development of the Children's Mental Health Program and wanting to develop that new program under the Behavioral Health Division in order to continue to begin, not continue, but begin to provide services to high-needs families, children and families who are needing additional behavioral health services. So just bringing that back to you guys today to follow up if there are any questions from the information that I presented two weeks ago. That program implementation will initially include two staff members, one bachelor's level clinician and one master's level clinician, with additional staff after July, to staff up to a total of six, including a program manager.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay. Well, I'm excited about this program and looking forward to seeing it stand up. I would love a motion from the board.
Okay, I actually have the motion this time. I move to approve the Children and Family Outpatient Mental Health Treatment Program.
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, the next two items of business, 7.3 and 7.4, are both approval of minutes from 2020. I'd be happy to take that as one motion.
Joe, did you have a question, Joe?
Excuse me, I think these two should be removed.
Actually, Commissioners, since Danielle already dropped off, I will forego my comments. Thank you.
So I think these moved off the agenda because you guys approved them on January 19th.
I'm sorry.
What now?
Please continue, Commissioners.
Can you hear me now? Can you guys hear me at all?
Yes, I'm trying to... No. That's a chance to get his voice in the room here. I'm not sure what he's trying to say.
Well, I'm trying to say I'm getting frustrated with our go-to, but be that as it may. Items, the two sets of minutes that are on your agenda were approved at your last meeting, so they should just come off your agenda.
Oh, okay. Now I must cop that in preparing for this agenda on break. Item 7.3 and 7.4, thank you.
Yep, Theresa emailed that this morning.
I missed it. Okay, my apologies.
That's why we paid big bucks.
Three minutes, it's right.
Okay, well, we will move on then to our other category, which today has a handful of cons and ends in it, including an executive session, which we will take up last. But I am trying to see whether I can find any of those items. I think I'd like to start first with the letter in support of changing the formula for students to also be able to receive the checks from the federal government independently rather than through their parents. Do any of you have that letter before you? I am struggling to find it. Had it open, but I...
I haven't. I haven't listed it. Uh, no, I haven't. Oh, it's in that format.
Commissioner, I do have the letter in front of me.
Okay, I...
I do also.
Yep. Okay, I do as well. So the intent of the letter is that dependents 18 and older be included in any upcoming stimulus plan with direct payments, so that students in particular, colleges and universities, can receive those direct payments to help them with their living expenses and treat them as full-fledged adults. Is there any discussion of this letter? It's directed to our congressional delegation. The version that we have is directed, represented to Congress, Mademoiselle, but this would be directed to each of our members of Congress.
I think that was my main question, is making sure that all our folks receive this.
And the city council last night approved this on a vote of 9 to 0, so if there's discussion, please, otherwise I would happily entertain a motion.
I will move to sign on to the letter about stimulus to the members of Congress, unless someone has a better way to say it.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Done, okay. Support our student population here in greater Benton County. And moving on to the other item, likewise, when I was having trouble earlier, I closed a bunch of windows, and I managed to close the ones I needed before. So I will be just a moment.
I can start out. It's supporting House Bill 2165 to support electric cars by some state dollars. One thing it doesn't have is fiscal impact. I think I find supporting the concept, House Bill 2165.
Actually, ratepayers pay for a large proportion of this funding, but then you require electric companies to collect a transportation electrification charge from all customers, and then some money also comes through Oregon Public Utility Commission. But, so I think that, I don't know that it has a huge fiscal impact. It has some, but yes, I also, speaking in support in order to reach our climate mitigation goals nationally, we all need to play a part. The electrification of our transportation is certainly a key piece. Which noise?
I can make a motion. I move to support HB 2165.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. So I would like to ask staff to add... So I would like to ask staff to add, not add our logo, but to send a copy of our logo to Celeste Kruger, who sent this request to us. And I will forward this letter, this document to Teresa so that you can help us out, if you would. Thank you very much. Now, we will move into executive session. So we will recess and switch lines and reconvene as soon as we can hop over there.
Do we have a separate line to come back or?
Teresa just sent it by email.
Okay.
See you in a couple.